Wes, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Bring this meeting to order, please, Cannon Board 2222. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's see if I can copy that agenda. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
I'm moved.
And thank you. Second, Linda?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None seen? Okay, now, look over. Anybody catch anything in the minutes? I got a couple of typos, but outside of that, I don't see anything. Anybody? Let's see. Wes, on the December minutes, on line forty-nine, I think. You meant to say systematic rather than systemic?
Which page?
Uh, page two, line sixty-nine.
Forty-nine.
I mean, line forty-nine at the top. See, it says clear systemic. I think it needs to be systematic, doesn't it? Systemic means something entirely different.
I agree, yes.
Yeah, okay. We all clear here?
Yes, sir.
That was the only thing I saw on that one, and then, on page, in January, it's on page three, line one-twenty, where it starts with Dan Hardy stated, "The homeowners and tenants will reply, maybe put that you are already charging enough." Okay. Other than that, good to go. One other thing in January, last page, on line two-forty-six, with Paula Sherlock. Might want to say councilwoman or councilperson Paula Sherlock, who's in attendance and agrees, because you did it with Leo earlier, either in this set or...
Okay, I'll say councilmember.
Yeah, councilmember Sherlock. Other than that, anybody snag anything else out of there? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those two sets of minutes. And?
A motion approved as amended.
Rick, a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Let's see. Boy, public comment, I'd like to recognize Sally Gudis to stand up and tell us why she's here.
I came to observe this thing, and it is not in action, so I didn't really come to make any comments. But since I'm here, y'all are invited to the Southern Shore Historic Blacktop Cottage Tour on Saturday, April the thirtieth, from one to five P.M. There are twelve blacktop homes on the tour, some of which are historic landmarks, but most are not. And the benefits go to the proceeds go to the Alabamian Community Foundation's Blacktop Restoration Fund, which helps to pay for the maintenance of the building right here at thirteen skyline. Tickets are not available in advance. We, it's kind of a mom and pop thing, and so today at the tour at our house, at fifty-six Blacktop, or in at the Alabamian Community Foundation.
Great.
Y'all come.
Okay, thank you. Sure you don't want to say anything else about lot coverage? Last chance.
No, I didn't need it though.
Yeah, okay. Stick around. Okay. All business is none, and new business is the ZTA that Wes has sent all of us. And Wes and I have spent more than probably he wanted to time jumping around on some of the issues that were, that we need to be aware of and discuss. So what I would like to do tonight is kind of let Wes give the staff report, read, customarily read the staff report for us. And then, what I'd like to do is mainly do most of the talking till, until we get Wes going. I would like to kind of present in picture form and what you and I have talked about, Wes. And then, towards the end of the meeting, we'll get into the meat of the ZTA, if that suits everybody. I don't mean to be hogging the floor, but it'll, might go a little bit quicker. So anyway, Wes, if you can read the staff report on this ZTA, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. The application on your agenda tonight is ZTA-two-two-zero-one, and it's a request from the Town of Southern Shores to amend section thirty-six-two-oh-two D six, two-oh-three D six, two-oh-four D six, two-oh-five D six, and two-oh-six D six. These proposed amendments are being proposed by town staff as a result of feedback provided by property owners and contractors regarding the open-slided deck exemption from lot coverage requirements. Currently, open-slided decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material not exceeding a total of twenty-five percent of the total footprint area of the attached single-family dwelling can be exempted from the maximum lot coverage requirement in the RS-one zoning district, the RS-one district only. The exemption is only available to an applicant for a building and zoning permit for a single-family dwelling or attached open-slided deck over pervious material upon presentation of a survey with all applicable requirements, including plan certification, for a lot disturbance and stormwater management permit as described in subsection thirty-six-one-seventy-one-three. The exemption only applies to new open-slided decks in the RS-one zoning district that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material if an engineered stormwater plan that demonstrates that following construction of the proposed improvements, the property will retain all stormwater generated by a one-and-a-half-inch rain event and will not adversely affect any stormwater management system previously constructed by the town or on adjacent properties. Since the current exemption became effective, property owners and contractors have voiced concerns about not allowing the same exemption for existing open-slided decks or for existing open-slided depths to fall into the credit. In some instances, existing open-slided decks were demolished and rebuilt in order to qualify for this exemption. So that's one of the main problems we kind of agree with, is that's, that came forward as the property owner said. So you're telling me that you'll give me this credit if I tear down and rebuild my open-slided deck, but you won't give me the credit as it sits there today? So we, you know, shook our head and agreed and said that, yeah, that's a reasonable request. The proposed amendments would allow existing decks not exceeding a total of twenty-five percent of the total footprint area of a permitted single-family dwelling on the same lot to qualify for the open-slided deck exemption in all of the town's residential districts. Making sure y'all noted that, that this would be added to the other districts, not just the RS-one district, but not all of the districts. It would not be applicable in the commercial zoning district, but all the residential districts and the government institutional districts, which allow single-family dwellings to be constructed. Following some mail of an engineered stormwater plan and Mr. Ward's documents and materials that we're going to go through later, you'll see on some of the plans and surveys we've received over the years, how the engineers show it on a plan, how the actual calculation, and where they show the amount, twenty-five percent of the attached single-family dwelling footprint, and what they actually used, and then also on the site plans, the proposed area. So back when this was approved in September of 2018, that was the caveat, is that you can, you can be granted this exemption, but at the same time, you must provide an engineered stormwater plan that shows that this property will retain all stormwater generated by a one-and-a-half-inch rain event. The one-and-a-half-inch rain event requirement is in our lot disturbance ordinance. When someone wants to develop a lot in the town, the first permit they have to obtain is a lot disturbance and stormwater management permit. And they have to demonstrate at that point. It doesn't necessarily have to be engineered, but they do have to demonstrate at that point that the property will retain all stormwater generated by a one-and-a-half-inch rain event. So that was one consideration. There was some discussion about stormwater. It's my opinion that stormwater is factored somewhat into lot coverage. It's a consideration of lot coverage. It's not necessarily what it's all about, but I believe it's something, that's something that is considered in part of lot coverage. But any rate, that concludes the staff report. Other than, the town recommends approval of the ZTA, notwithstanding some of the things you and I have discussed today that you're going to be bringing up, and that the amendments are consistent with the town's land use plan and policy number two. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Wes. Well, Wes has sent, in addition to the staff report and the ZTA itself, he's sent you all some stuff that I had in copy and should be for you tonight. The first one I want to look at with you is the lot coverage history. If everybody should be in your packet, or it's here on the desk somewhere.
It's on the, these are new screens, by the way. I don't know if y'all noticed that, but everything that shows up here is now going to show right there in front of me. There was some difficulty with our elected officials, and I'm sure y'all too, sometimes seeing what's on the screen. So hopefully, this will make it a lot easier for y'all. I don't know if you can zoom in on it or not.
That's a big help.
Today's the first time I've seen.
Yeah, great. Okay, our tax dollars at work. I love it. Well, briefly, the history of lot coverage that I've picked up on, and I'll even go farther back in time in the lot coverage, but let's see, that thing that you sent me, Wes. It was from nineteen eighty-one is where the original zoning ordinance started, in nineteen eighty-one. It went from eighty-one to nineteen ninety-five, didn't it? I don't have that.
There might have been an update in eighty-eight as well, but in ninety... You go ahead.
At any rate, oh, yeah, I got it back here. The first zoning ordinance was passed with a definition for lot coverage in July of eighty-one.
No, no, no. Lot coverage wasn't defined until nineteen ninety-five.
Was passed without a definition.
Correct. It was just thirty percent, no definition.
And then, on March the seventh of nineteen ninety-five, lot coverage was defined until revised on September fifth, twenty eighteen. So the lot coverage was defined in our ordinance on March the seventh, nineteen ninety-five, and that stayed basically in effect, the definition of lot coverage and how it's applied, until September fifth of twenty eighteen, which, that's twenty-three and a half years that we've had the thirty percent lot coverage in place and defined. So from March the seventh, nineteen ninety-five, to September fifth, twenty eighteen, twenty-three and a half years, we've had the same lot coverage in this town. So if you look back at where the most recent changes came up, the ZTA seventeen oh-three, which was lot coverage, was brought to town council by a public hearing. It failed to move forward with a three-to-two vote. Holland, Newberry, and McDonnell voted no. Nathan Dennett voted yes to change the lot coverage or to adopt that that was before them. Then, in about a year later, in July of twenty eighteen, at the town council meeting, ZTA eighteen oh-four was up for consideration in public hearing. I wasn't on the planning board at that time, but I asked town council in public comment to let the planning board have another look at it, because I was coming on in a couple of weeks, I believe. So at that point, the planning board, it got kicked back to the planning board, but the original, the original ZTA that was looked at, at that July tenth, twenty eighteen, meeting was, it had items A and B, what, excuse me, or so, in effect, the pervious materials and turf stone pavers contribute at fifty percent lot coverage, was ultimately taken out. The gravel walkways stayed and are in place today. The outermost four feet of all eaves was taken out, up to five hundred square feet of water, and swimming pools was taken out, and this was all by the planning board at the time in twenty eighteen. And then, the open-slided decks in item G and item H have stayed in for three and a half years, right? It's been... So the, the town council, on the planning board's recommendation, and it was, I'm the only one out of the current makeup of the planning board that was sitting on the board at that time, we knocked around and knocked out the stuff that we felt was pretty egregious for lot coverage, but we chose to leave in the two items that we're going to discuss tonight. And as far as the, the code right survey that was done in twenty sixteen, I believe it was finished, I think the results were February eighteenth of twenty sixteen, so.
Okay, the results, yeah. I think the survey itself probably took place in twenty fifteen or early twenty sixteen.
Yeah. Out of that, and there were about seven hundred and fifty responses. Out of that code right survey, which we are supposed to be taking elements of code right into consideration as we're trying to revamp our stuff here in town. But just looking back at that survey again, sixty-two percent, the question was, it was like question fourteen or something in the survey, that said, "Should the town increase maximum allowable lot coverage?" And the answers were sixty-two percent disagreed or strongly disagreed in increasing lot coverage. Thirty percent agreed or strongly agreed to increase it. Eight percent were undecided. So the sixty-two percent that disagreed or strongly disagreed with increasing was twice as much as those that wanted to increase. So just a, just a note on that. Anyway, enough of the history lesson. What I want to do next is, Wes, let's, let's look at the definitions of lot coverage, which you sent to everybody as well. We have, too many damn papers here. Okay. In the definitions, the, which are in effect up through today, the building setback line has been altered slightly. The eaves were struck from that by town council earlier. We, as a planning board, had asked that they be included. Town council struck the eaves in the building setback line. Lot coverage means that portion of the lot area expresses a percentage that is occupied and obstructed by any structure above the ground, including but not limited to building decks, pools, parking areas, blah, blah, blah. And then, yard, once again, the planning board wanted to include the outermost three feet of the eaves, but that was also struck, and so simply eaves is in that language for yard. Other than that, the other definitions of yard front, yard rear, yard side aren't what we need to worry about tonight. And Wes, I did have one question in here, just while we're here. You don't have to labor on it, but what did we ever figure on the cantilevered decks and heat pump stands as far as setback, lot coverage?
Eaves do not count.
Not eaves.
Cantilevered portions of a house, by definition, should contribute. HVAC stands also contribute.
They do contribute.
Right. Because remember, you asked me about one particular house on Ocean Boulevard, and I showed you the ASBIL survey, and it showed those cantilevered, those decks as coverage, and HVAC stands also count as coverage. Granted, most of the time they're open-slided deck, but there's equipment on top of it.
Right.
So that's, I have considered it as, and I've asked ASBIL surveys to show that and include it.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay. All right.
What the, the coverage, thirty percent, is to accommodate, so that every lot should be able to accommodate a one-and-a-half-inch rain event over a one-hour period?
If they want to take advantage, if they want to be eligible for the exemption that we're speaking of, up to twenty-five percent of the attached single-family dwelling, they have to submit an engineered stormwater plan for one-and-a-half-inch rain event. Otherwise, all development, when any development requiring a building permit and zoning permit, whenever you're building a garage, whether you're building a deck or doing in addition to your house, the property's supposed to retain all stormwater generated by a one-and-a-half-inch rain event.
So that's all looking at the lot by just vertical surface. No planer, no like runoff, no driveway sloping to the street ramping. In other words, it's all assuming everything just goes straight down and there's no concentration or...
There, I mean, that's one way to consider it, but yes, I mean, in a lot of cases, there are low-impact development techniques applied, such as swales or slanted driveways. But as far as the calculation goes, I'm not an engineer, but that's probably how they factor that in.
So the intent is to keep the water in that area?
The intent is so that the amount of water that falls in a one-and-a-half-inch rain event is retained on the property, whether it be done seeping through the ground or some other.
So, okay, so I guess what I'm getting to is, you got some of these houses that have giant driveways sloping down to the road. So there's, even though it might be under the, you know, calculation says there's enough area on this lot to hold that rain, that particular feature, driveway, doesn't in any way, shape, or form. It just sends it to the road.
Yeah, I would say that this, that, I don't know, I couldn't tell you right now off the top of my head when that one-and-a-half-inch rain event requirement was added, but it was, it has, it was since I've been employed, which is the last twelve years.
But all these definitions and calculations come from the state, right? They're the ones that happen.
The one-and-a-half, well, there was a lot of discussion about the one-and-a-half-inch rain event, and then there was discussion about, should there be a time factor as well? Like a five-hour, four-hour, two-hour, three-hour? Yeah. But the idea, let's keep it simple, and after our town engineer came to those meetings and provided the input, and they landed on the one-and-a-half-inch rain event. So, I mean, I can pull up one of these examples, and I'll zoom in for you, if you'd like, on the calculations and how the engineer showed. I'd be glad to show you that later on when we get to that point.
Is lot coverage now, if I were to build a new house, part of getting that permit would require a stormwater permit to include the...
The first, the first permit, before you can apply for the building permit and the zoning permit for the development, you have to obtain a lot disturbance and stormwater management permit. And that is the, and that's where they first have to demonstrate that they're meeting the one-and-a-half-inch requirement.
And that sounds, it sounds to me like some of the houses that Ed referred to would not be permitted currently, you know, with those driveways. They would have had to do some mitigation, but most of them were done, you know, before two thousand and seven, eight, whenever.
Well, no, actually, I was talking about some of the recent ones I've seen with giant parking areas, you know, brought up by, get access to and from a driveway that's pretty wide coming up from the street. So if that particular impervious area isn't specifically addressed, then all the stuff that you're talking about for decks and pools and things like that, it could just go out the window. And the water goes out on the street.
Who, you said it doesn't have to be an engineered stamp on the stormwater management house?
No, unless you're, the only time, only time an engineered stormwater plan is required is if you're seeking this exemption, the open-slided deck exemption.
Or if you require it based on.
Or if I require it based on my judgment, this is, it's at my discretion, that was another part that was in there, is that it'll be a case-by-case basis.
Right.
In some cases, I send, in all cases, I send it to the Public Works Director. The Public Works Department first looks at it and makes sure it doesn't go onto the streets or cause any adverse impacts to the streets. And then, in some cases, I'll send it to the town engineer for them to review. And in some cases, they'll say, or an engineer has even provided information saying that this property retains one-and-a-half-inch stormwater event without doing anything to it.
Right.
As far as stormwater impacts.
What if Robert came to you and he had a new house and he said, I mean, and you could look at it and say, the thing's perfectly flat. As a matter of fact, it's going uphill to the street rather than downhill. And he goes, "I'm sort of finding that this thing's good for one-and-a-half inches of rain." But, I mean, is that what you would take as a stormwater?
Oh, I mean, in, in.
And lot disturbance?
No, in some cases, I'll say, I'll ask and say, what are your, I'll send an email. Not, I mean, trying to, not too long ago, I started the process, and I would put it in writing. I would send an email and say, what are your plans for storm, potential stormwater impacts? And then they'll either explain it to me, or they'll draw it on a site plan if it's not an engineer involved. And in some, like I said, in some cases, I'll say, no, there's a lot of topography on this lot. on this lot. You need to get an engineer stormwater plan, or I'll, I'll ask them, the town engineer, I'll send them what, send the town engineer what they have sent me. So.
Yeah. Certain ways, checks and balances before you actually have to go out and pay for a full-on stormwater. You'll see one coming up that's pretty expensive and it's pretty impressive, really.
Yeah, I mean, it's expensive.
Don't wrong it is. Anyway, let's move on.
One more.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. This only pertains to new construction or you're familiar what's next, next to my house, major renovation work or it pertains to that also?
It's when, whenever a building permit and whenever there's an expansion of footprint and a zoning permit and building permit are required. And that, and the property next to yours, your neighbor, I don't believe a zoning permit was required, I don't think, were they remodeling or adding on a deck?
They expanded the deck and covered it for.
So, then a zoning permit would be required and they have to meet, they had to meet that requirement.
Which I don't know if they did.
Well, we can, we can certainly look into that.
You know the problem with that property.
Anybody else got anything for Wes? Okay, let's, let's get down to some drawings. If you can bring up my example that you all got from Wes. Everybody see that? Go ahead.
I have one question, and that is that we're not really debating the lot coverage standards and that kind of thing. We're debating whether or not it should be applied to existing.
Yes and no.
Yes and no, okay.
Stay tuned. I told you before this meeting started, Robert, that I wasn't necessarily pleased with my vote three and a half years ago. And, you know, I'm the only one sitting on this board that voted, so. But, yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it in the end. In this example here, and this is in big red letters up there, not to scale, but this is the example, and I was just whipping this out, but if you look at a twenty thousand square foot piece of property, where I live, my lot's just a shade over twenty thousand square feet on Bayberry. Yours is, it's probably three quarters of an acre in Chickahawke, isn't it bigger?
Not bigger than that, but I mean, they're bigger lots.
Right. But on average, I would say twenty thousand's a pretty good round, round number to be looking at, at an average lot. There are some considerably bigger and some smaller. Anyway, if you do the, the calculation for the twenty-five percent open-slatted decking credit that would not apply to lot coverage, you simply take the four thousand square foot footprint, which that would be a big rancher, but if you took that footprint and twenty-five percent of the house footprint, the way the ordinance reads right now, and it has for three and a half years, you could glean out a thousand square feet of decking, which is, I've highlighted in red, if you had a thousand foot, square foot of swimming pool and surround, and then another thousand square feet of drive area. The lot coverage is six thousand square feet. So, if you take four thousand, one thousand, and one thousand, that gets you to six thousand square feet. So, you've maxed out the lot coverage, but you still got another thousand feet of deck that is related back to the house footprint at twenty-five percent. Everybody understand that? Okay. I mean, we're not gonna get into who, what, when, and why, but that's just, that is a simplistic look at getting a whole nother thousand square feet by multiplying your house footprint times twenty-five percent. What it does in this case is it adds, if you add that thousand square feet, square foot of open deck that you could build by this ordinance, instead of going to thirty percent lot coverage, now you're going to thirty-five percent actual lot coverage, the way lot coverage was defined. Everybody good with that? Okay. Can we do some pictures?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna circle back through on this. I'm just, I got a plan. I would say, Wes, the, my pictures I took yesterday, mostly yesterday. Yeah, I think we'll just roll from, from that to the north. I'll just briefly describe what that is. That's at sixty-two.
The one with thirteen, thirteen pictures?
Yeah, yeah. Did you put that, the?
Yes.
Survey on the end?
The one at Bayberry?
Yeah. The survey that I sent you right there at four o'clock.
Whatever picture you sent, whatever picture you sent at the end, I put in.
Okay, yeah. You don't know what it is?
That made it, no, I thought it was a picture. I don't remember it being a survey, but we'll get, we'll get to it, we'll see.
Okay, that, that is that house at sixty-two Ocean Boulevard. That, the house, as far as we can tell, it's not listed on the survey that it, that the house sits in the one-twenty camma setback, but obviously the pool house is in the sixty foot camma setback and is perfectly allowed. Everything's, you know, checks out. The lot coverage on this house, I had Wes and I look that up this morning, the lot coverage of that house is twenty-nine point four percent existing right now. What you see there.
Is that including the pool house?
Yes, that, that includes, that's every hard structure that would be on an as-built survey. But perfectly legal, no, nothing out of the way there, but, you know, they're tight on lot coverage, twenty-nine point four percent. But if you note, there's no accessway or walkway out to the beach because they're out of lot coverage, right? Okay, next one, Wes. Just a close-up of that pool house, very well done. You know, architecturally suits the, the property, but it's sticking out there. Okay, next one is looking from the north to the south, and this is the terracotta, you know where we're at, everybody knows, the red, the red houses. So, two doors down from the red house is the terracotta room. Okay. Once again, perfectly legal to build that, everything checks out. They do not have a walkway to the beach either because they're out of room. Note that the house with the screen porch back to your far right, that's Councilwoman Sherlock's house, and they're justly not too happy about having that thing sitting on their screen porch in the back of the wall, but unfortunately, that's, we're not talking about that. We're just, it is what it is and they're not happy about it, but it, they were entitled to do that. Not too neighborly, but that's what happened. Okay, the next one I think is going, yeah, it's looking back, that's, that's the Sherlock house right, right to the foreground, and those two houses are sticking out in the, in the sixty-foot camma setback, but no, no walkway or dune deck out. Okay. This is, where is that? That's around maybe Malkin Bird, I think. Well, it's, it's right about where the boat was on the beach. The boat was on the beach on that big, that big white dune deck, walkway that goes out. The boat was right behind there, the trawl boat. It's Becky Harold's house at one sixty-six Ocean Boulevard. But what I, what I took that picture for is there's a little, to the left, there's a little pool house there at the Miller's house. That house has been there for, right? Man, this is nice, Wes. But, you know, very well done, but, and completely legal, everything's good to go. They do have a walkway out to the beach because they didn't, you know, they utilized her lot covers well. Okay. And then this will, the next one would be the front of the house. This is one sixty-six. There's the, there's the little walkway that's down on, on Ocean Boulevard. Okay.
He's pointing out the walkway over here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, this one was at, and that one was at two twenty-eight Ocean Boulevard, getting close down to, around Periwinkle and Hickory Trail, probably closer to Periwinkle, but that's at two twenty-eight. That, it's a big house, it's for sale right now. Yeah. Is that right? Okay. Anyway, it, it's a big house. I don't know why it hadn't sold, it's pretty attractive, maybe the price is too high. But that, that pool house right there, I measured it, it's twelve feet by twenty-five feet, which is three hundred square feet, perfectly legal. The house, I'm sure, is over five thousand square feet, so it is in, all probability is in the one-twenty camma setback line. That little house is in the sixty, perfectly legal. Once again, they don't have much walkway out to the beach either because they're out of lot coverage. Okay, the next one just is a shot looking back into the, yeah, that, that's it right there. Attracting suits the house, twenty-five by twelve, three hundred square feet. Okay. Yeah, I think the next one's just shooting, yeah, back in. That's it again, and if you say, well, that's attached, it's not really attached, it's structurally detached, isn't it, Wes? Was that the term where we're bridging over something with a piece of decking?
The deck would have to be struc, it would have to be structurally detached.
Right, yeah, so you'd have a gap at, visibly looking at it, you'd never know it. I mean, I've had to do it on a couple of oceanfront houses where I've had to double up the pile and the girder.
What are you, what are you talking about detached?
This isn't attached technically to the house or the deck, right?
Or the others?
Probably not. I doubt it. I mean.
Is that something that they have to be attached?
For, if any portion of a house that's supposed to be in the camma one-twenty setback, if any portion is attached to the house, you can't have any portion attached, and that means open deck too. I'll show you in a little bit, but you'll recognize this. Okay. That is, that's at Hickory Trail, once again, nice-looking pool house, what have you. They, I believe they had a little bit, yeah, I made a note on that. Everything, if you look at the GIS on that one, everything fits, but that's it, that's number one Hickory Trail right there, but everything fits on the lot. They've got a pool, they've got some walkway going out to the beach. That house was built in, I don't know, twenty, what, fifteen maybe?
Is that one Marty Miller built?
Ah, no, I don't think so. I think J.B. Edwards built that house, but I can't be a hundred percent sure. But anyway, it, it, they've got a pool and they've got some walkway going out to the beach. So, okay, I think that's it. No, 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 keep, keep rolling. This is Ninth Avenue. A very large house, but the lot coverage on that was twenty-nine point six percent. Let me go to the next one, Wes. Did I have one showing the whole thing? No, go back. Yeah, the next, yeah. Oh, other way.
Just tell me two.
Yeah, right there, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Big house, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the little one is showers?
Yeah, it's showers and/or bathroom.
Okay, probably showers.
Yeah, but I think.
Kind of hard to put a toilet on the oceanfront, but who knows? And then screen porch, screened area, you know, nice, looks great, but if you note on that house, there's no walkway to the beach either because they're at twenty-nine point six percent lot coverage. However, if we kept what was in place right now, they could add on attached to the house? Is that right? Attached? It has to be attached, a, a walkway and dune deck.
Correct. If they wanted to put a dune deck or walkway out there, it would have to be connected slash attached to the open-slatted, to the single-family dwelling.
Right. Via the open-slatted deck.
Via the existing open-slatted deck, so it would tie into that.
And they could, they could have.
Does the, the open-slatted deck has to be above permeable surface?
Yeah, in some form or fashion, but if you've got stacked decks, I'm assuming that you still get the twenty-five percent.
Stacked decks, yes.
Stacked decks over permeable.
Correct.
But if you took a walkway from the, yeah.
Say from right here and went all the way straight out.
Right.
They could, today, they could do that.
They could do that today, the way the law or the ordinance says.
So, you're saying it's permeable surface underneath that deck?
I don't recall, honestly. It might not, it might not be, but.
It might be a pool over there, but if you came to the far, the far-left corner where the, right there, yeah, I, I think you, you'd be in the clear there going straight out.
You would just have.
Yeah, you come straight out, but the point I'm making here is that they could do that, they could add, no telling what the footprint of that house is. We, we could pull it up, but it's gotta be at least, what, twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet of foundation footprint, dwelling footprint?
It's Paul, I don't recall the number.
Yeah, we didn't look that up.
And I didn't scan though.
Yeah. But the footprint of the, the heated or conditioned portion of that, that house, if you took that and say it was, you know, three thousand square feet, then you multiply that times twenty-five percent, what does that get you? Seven hundred and fifty square feet of freebie lot coverage-wise. They don't have it, but they could. They used all their lot coverage up building that great big house. That make sense?
Yeah.
Point of clarification, you said that they could add that, they cannot since it's finished, it's built. If they had requested it, they would have been allowed to.
No, they could do it today. They could apply for a deck addition with the open-slided deck exemption, and it would not apply to their lot coverage.
Yeah, okay, I misunderstood. I thought it only applied to new construction.
New construction as in whatever the work is. The current language says if it's a building, it's for single-family dwelling or and, and open-slided decks.
I'd say, no, I'm, I'm following, I'm, yeah, I see what you're saying, yes.
They can apply for a new open-slided deck, get a building permit, zoning permit, submit the engineer stormwater plan, whatever, and whatever the number is, probably six or seven hundred square feet, like Chairman Lord's pointed out, and, and they would be able to have their dune deck in. And, and they would be able to have their dune deck and dune walkway.
Yeah, right. Yeah, they just, they chose to maximize lot coverage when they built that house. Because there's no walkway out. You gotta go through the bramble to get, get to the beach. It, it's pretty wild. Okay, well, um. There's one more picture. And I might. Maybe we'll, we'll come back to that, Wes. Well, just to clarify, I mean, this is, this is a family member's house that I built at forty-eight Ocean Boulevard. The dotted line that you see, the camo buffer line. It, it runs, you know, right along there by the dune deck. And then the, uh, the one twenty large structure, a little bit harder to see. But I separated off Ed that, where that, where that deck is, that, that's. I separated it from the rest of the house because I couldn't let any part of that structure hang into the one twenty. Setback. So I had to keep the house behind and, and everything behind that line. I couldn't, couldn't go eastward of that one twenty setback line. So, um, I put a double set of piles and we got, you know. Three inches between each one of them, and that there is the separation, and it's bridged by. Uh, a piece of, of decking there at the walkway that you could take out with, um, you know, ten screws. So that, that's how on the Red Roof House and the Terracotta House, I'm sure Alan Hutton, the builder. Did just that. I would be surprised if he, if he had them connected. But anyway, that is. The, the one twenty setback line and, um, I guess zoom back out and did I. I didn't put the, the figures in that, so we'll, we might dial back in on this, uh, but for now, I, I think we're good on that. And maybe I'll get you, Ed, to. I mean, sorry, Wes, to pull up the, um. The Owens compound, the four properties that we've got. Uh, information on. This. This sheet here, does everybody have this? Okay. These are four houses I know well. I'm not infringing on anybody's, uh. You know, rights to information. This is my family's stuff, so, uh, I know it well. I've put my hands all over it, and I know what they. They could do, and if, if Wes can pull up the, the GIS while we look at these in hand. I'll just roll down and explain what we got.
You starting it?
Forty-eight Ocean Boulevard. Okay, that, that's what you just looked at, that, that partial survey that showed the camo setback line. It's. You know, close to the dune deck and back towards the house. I think twelve, about twelve feet off of the, the house is where the, the one twenty line goes. But that, that area in the, to the, to the north or to the south of the walkway. Just like those other two properties that we saw, the, the red house and the Terracotta House, and well, all of them that have. You know, um, pool houses, bars, what, whatever is in there. You could put one on either side. There's not one there, but they're pretty, uh, they're pretty tight on lot coverage at this house. We're at. Twenty-nine point seven five percent lot coverage, so we're maxed out at lot coverage. But if you look at the sheet that we've got, number forty-eight. The first floor heated is three thousand sixty-four square feet. If you do the math for the twenty-five percent credit for open slat decking. You could glean out seven hundred and sixty-six square feet of open slatted decking. That would go on top of what they already have at twenty-nine point seven five lot coverage. Okay, so at their house, the open slatted decking. Which would be the walkway, the dune deck, and there's some, some deck up, up top that you really can't see. But their, their open decking is like eight hundred and sixty-one square feet. So, um. If they can glean out of that seven hundred and sixty-six. Square feet of extra credit. Then they get. Seven hundred and sixty-six square feet that's not counted towards lot coverage. In the strict interpretation, four years ago, not three, not now going back three and a half years, but, um. When I built this house, that law didn't, or that ordinance didn't exist. So. The open slatted decking is eight, eight hundred and sixty-one square feet, uh, is what they have. But the figure is seven sixty-six. So it increases the lot coverage to about thirty-two and a half percent on that one. If they wanted to pull that credit out, they've got it in the, in the open slat decking. So that eight sixty-one is already there. They could do an additional seven hundred and sixty-six feet of hard structure.
Hard structure?
Like a pool house. Right? They could take that seven sixty-six and do whatever they wanted to with it, because. They're gonna get credit for open slat decking that's already there. They have eight, existing eight hundred and sixty-one square feet.
Well, how could you equate seven hundred and sixty-six square feet of open slat decking with a pool house, which is.
Because, because, that's right. If you back out. The allowance, the twenty-five percent credit. Then they could say, well, we want that seven hundred and sixty-six square feet. We've already got that in open slatted decking. They got that. So you could take. That seven hundred and sixty-six square feet and convert it to hard surface. And not go over lot coverage.
What's the, uh, calculation to go from seven sixty-six permeable to whatever the footprint of the deck?
I just know it, if, if we do what's in front of us tonight. They could claim that exemption because it's existing. And if they wanted to build a pool house, they've got seven hundred and sixty-six square feet of free. Freed up lot coverage because of the twenty-five percent. Heated floor, first floor footprint. Okay, that's right, as far as I know.
Yeah, that's, and so you get twenty-five percent of the attached single family dwelling, and. The open slatted deck is considered to be purpose. That's what you're trading.
Is considered what? Pervious.
Pervious.
Yeah.
That's essentially what it does.
Yeah.
So, yes, you are adding new coverage, but another, some argument may be that, well, the open slatted deck is not coverage. Because it's allowing water to penetrate through to pervious material.
And, you know, we. Wes certainly, you know, has, um. You know, the idea about stormwater, and I understand completely that we are treading on, on. You know, some. Stuff that, that might contribute to stormwater, but I'm looking at it as aesthetics. And I guarantee you, if I told my second cousin or first cousin once removed, who's got more money than God, that he could do that. He'd wanna do it. He'd wanna know, when could I get started? So. I'm against it. I, I, I'm flat out against it.
So, so what you're saying is that the more open slatted decking you have on a house.
Yeah, if, if you're.
The, the, the more permanent structure, you could.
That's right. Well, you get seven hundred and sixty-six square, in this example, you get seven hundred and sixty-six square feet of twenty-five percent credit. The way the ordinance reads for the first floor footprint heated space. So you can take that seven hundred and sixty-six square feet and you take that out of the equation. And put it into hard structure, pool house, et cetera.
But I, but I just wanna clarify one thing that I, that I said earlier, though, just using your example, just so everybody understands this. Your cousin could today apply to do that.
Correct.
If he tore, if he tore it all down and rebuilt it.
And.
It would allow for him, them to build another pool or a pool house or whoever, or whatever. So that, that's, that's what strikes us.
Will you say that again?
They, someone today, in, in the same situation, who is at twenty-nine percent lot coverage.
Yeah.
And they have open slatted decks that already counted to lot coverage. That when it was approved.
It did that.
They could tear it down. Rebuild it, submit an engineer stormwater plan. And then up to twenty-five percent, whatever that number is, let's say a six hundred square feet. Would be allowed to, you could use that square footage to build something else, because the open slatted deck, in the same footprint that was already there. Now no longer contributes.
That's right. I mean, just, just imagine that you just erase that seven hundred and sixty square feet of, of lot coverage, i.e. Open slatted decking, and then you get to put seven hundred and sixty-six square foot of hard structure back, because you, you.
So the premise.
Seems like we're using the wrong tool to get, to. You, you know, the, the. The, um, pool house is an aesthetic or, 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 it's a whole different thing. Stormwater is based on retaining water on the lot, period. It's not an aesthetic thing of saying, I don't like where you put your pool house. It's, it's a calculation that says this lot with this soil type should be able to absorb certain.
Well, and that, that's.
Amount of rain, but if you've got, look at the driveway and parking area, what about addressing that?
You're going into sand back there, Ed.
Oh, I know, but you, I'm saying that's what stormwater calculations are all about.
Well, and that's, that's a requirement of even doing any of this, but I guarantee you. I could find a, an engineer that would put his stamp on that and argue.
The, the idea was, when this was adopted in twenty eighteen, the, 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 the intent. Of having the engineer stormwater plan requirement was acknowledging that, yes, you are building more structure. But at the same time, when you're proposing whatever it is that you're gonna propose. You still have, you, you need to demonstrate, an engineer has to demonstrate on an engineer stormwater plan that has his seal on it. That says that the property will retain all stormwater generated by one and a half inch rain event. That's what, that's why they added the caveat, because they acknowledged, they, we all understood that, yes, it ultimately ends up in more coverage. But in order to help reduce any potential impacts or mitigate impacts. Provide the stormwater plan and hopefully it won't be an issue.
Well, for what it's worth, when I got the building permit for that, I mean, you can see it's flat ground. It probably slopes.
Yeah, the driveway I know is even with the road.
Yeah, and it's canned off to one side. I didn't have to, uh, provide a stormwater plan for that. And, you know, Wes was a reasonable person. He and Dabney came out and looked it over and, you know, that was all we needed.
Well, you, you go up towards Corral and you have these same type of structures going on, and that place, Whalehead, is just. A big swimming pool after a rain event.
Absolutely.
Where you're on that highly pervious. Uh, sand that has the highest infiltration calculation in the state. And it's still floods because. Everybody was according to the calculations.
Well, the sand can only absorb so much.
Right.
Just like a sponge. That's it.
And so the, the, uh. I don't know, it seems like you're using the wrong metric to.
Well, it, the way, I think the way all of this got started was it, it was, um. Uh, a reach out to try to, uh, meet, you know, some desires halfway. And, uh, code right instigated us looking at lot coverage, and so this, the first cut of this that had. Eaves and half the driveway.
Swimming pool.
Uh, swimming pools and all that stuff. Uh, so we pared it down and this is what was left, but. Yeah, I'm with you, but I, I guarantee you, the way this law is written, I could find an engineer. That would give me a stormwater plan, and I could build. You know, I could use up to six hundred and six, seven hundred and sixty-six square feet. So then I'm pushing the lot coverage. And I'm looking at it, you, you're more scientific than I am. Two guys down here, they're.
And, 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 and it's not just, you, you, you're, you're stuck on building a pool house. You could actually put an addition onto the house. With that, so you could add more bedrooms.
Potentially, if you went out the way, yeah, yeah.
Well, you're looking at lot coverage in two different ways.
That's right.
First is somebody back in the day said, oh, we're only gonna allow thirty percent lot coverage because we want low density. That's what that means.
That's exactly right.
People want whatever they want, okay? Then you're talking about thirty percent lot coverage from a stormwater standpoint. And from. From my estimation, in my experience. If you go to thirty-two and a half percent of what you're calling lot coverage. Um, you're still meeting the stormwater requirements, which is what I care about. You're still hitting thirty on the lot coverage. As far as creating, as limiting, uh, construction for open space and things like that. People do more damage with thirty percent than other people can do with sixty percent.
Yeah, but that's.
You can take thirty, you can take thirty percent lot coverage on a lot, mow it down from the front to the back. Every tree, level it completely and be absolutely perfect and look in every neighbor's window. So the thirty percent lot coverage for, um. Single family stuff, I, I'm not buying it. I, I say if he gets a seventy, seven hundred and sixty-six foot credit and wants to build a pool house with it, let him go. Because what they're doing is they're meeting our intention of stormwater, uh, planning.
Well, in, in this particular case.
You don't like a pool house or you don't want, it doesn't matter.
I hear what you're saying, but. I hear what you're saying, but in this particular case, you can have both scenarios. You can have the stormwater. It will hold the stormwater that you desire and. But on the other hand, it bumps the lot coverage up, which I don't desire. I, I think that, you know, I've lived here for thirty-eight years and it's been thirty percent lot coverage and. People have worked around it, just like I worked around it there, revving and cramming more stuff onto a lot. And, you know, making it visually less appealing, just because it holds, you know, one and a half inches stormwater. It is part of the equation, but it's not. I, I'm, I favor the aesthetics of having a thirty percent lot coverage over. The worry of stormwater runoff, because it didn't clay out there, mostly it sank. But we have a drop back in that even to get. Any kind of credit, you have to go get a stormwater management plan before you ever even do that. I'm saying I could do that pretty easy as far as getting, getting a stamp, plan.
I would hope so, because I wouldn't wanna put an, I wouldn't wanna put a big burden on you as a property. To come up with a stormwater plan for a flat lot. to come up with a stormwater plan for a flat lot on the beach.
But, but where do we stop? Is, is forty percent okay?
It, it, this lot, the lot coverage calculation, if that's what it takes you to.
I, I, I disagree.
Aesthetics, go up on, go to any new, most of the new construction that I see. It is flat lot line to lot line. So the hundred foot width, the thirty foot lot, lot coverage does nothing for aesthetics.
Hey, uh, we can't legislate how many trees or what you do with your lot. But we can legislate how much stuff you put on your lot, uh, coverage wise. And.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, let's, um, we'll, we'll just roll down the, to the, uh, south at number fifty.
Uh, one more question. So Wes, did you say that, um, they would have to tear down that deck?
Today.
And that, I'm totally against that. Sorry, but.
To, today, the way this ordinance is worded right now, it's, it's, it requires, it only applies to new open slided deck. It doesn't incorporate existing. So they could submit an application for tearing it down and rebuilding it, submitting engineer stormwater plan, and then still get the exemptions. That's mo- most of what brought this on.
Tell me this, if, if, nevermind, forget it. Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Which is crazy. I mean, I'm, I'm totally against that. Hey, Chris, give, give people credit for, for what, what is there rather than make them tear it down and build it back. I just, I, I'm not for opening up the checkbook and giving them twenty-five percent credit. And we'll get to that a little bit later on.
Hey, Andy.
Yeah.
Uh, now, now Southern Source has what, a seven max bedroom build?
We, we can't say that. We have a fourteen person occupancy, or sadly capacity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so with this formula, with the credits on a s- seven bedroom house that they have or fourteen person capacity, you know, they could add another.
They could have a.
Then, so they could go above that with, with that formula. They couldn't go above the occupancy limit.
No, they, no, they could go, they could make a bigger kitchen or bigger living.
They could add another bedroom, but they can only advertise fourteen.
Right.
If they have.
Right. They, they could advertise what, what they advertise, but they're, they're, they're making the structure bigger for more people. And we all know they do that.
We also have the six thousand square foot heated space restriction.
Right. And that large house at the, at Ninth Avenue is like five nine.
Nine, 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 nine.
Yeah, it's, it's real close, but it's a big house. Okay, where are we at now?
You said you go, uh, which way south?
Go to fifty. I'm sorry, go, go north fifty. Oh, yeah. Okay, that's on a seventy-five foot lot. Oh. If you look at number fifty in your, uh, your handout sheet there, their, uh, first floor heated at fifty is, um, twenty-four hundred and twenty-one square feet. Applying the twenty-five percent credit, they would get an additional six hundred and five square feet of, um, credit for open slat decking. They already have nine hundred and ninety-six square feet of open slat decking. So they have obviously more existing than they would get credit for. So that would not be a problem. And they could take that six hundred and five square feet and since that poor little house doesn't have a swimming pool.
Now they can.
It could have a swimming pool.
Now they can.
Yes. And that, I built that house thirty-one years ago. And hopefully my cousin's not watching this on YouTube, but I don't like it. And I know what he would say. He would go, why can't I have it? In one of those surveys, this guy responded, I was telling Wes today on that code right survey, this guy responded that, to the question, he said, well, I'm for lot coverage unless it means I can't build a swimming pool with a freestanding garage. Otherwise I'm against it. So that's my cousin to a T. And, you know, whatever, uh, find somebody else to build a pool if we choose that path. But at the same time, six hundred and five square feet would put a pool in there. And you would take, if you use that, you'd take that lot coverage up to about thirty-four percent. Visual lot coverage. I'm not factoring in, I'm not talking about stormwater runoff or anything like that. I'm just saying visual lot coverage where he's already over lot coverage there, um, and by a little bit. And thirty-four percent would be a lot more. But he can do that at, on that piece of property. Okay, going to the northwest. That's at fifty-two. That's Mr. Denny, our former mayor's old house. Um, I put the addition on the front of it several years ago, but the footprint on that one is twenty-nine, forty-eight square feet. So they would get seven hundred and thirty-seven square feet of, um, credit for open slat decking. They already have, they have a lot of decking there. It's twelve hundred and sixty-eight square feet of decking on that house. It's, it's substantial and it's, um, so anyway, it's seven hundred and thirty-seven square feet. They can get a pool. And it takes the lot coverage, if they use that entire seven hundred and thirty-seven square feet, they have, their existing coverage is lower. It's like twenty-eight point one four percent. So with the open deck credit, in their case, it only takes the, the lot coverage up to, if they use the max, to about thirty point eight five percent. So they have some, a little bit left, uh, in, in lot coverage there. Uh, anyway, go to number fifty-four. I know Sally's looking out there going, there was a flat top on every one of those. Ironically, I think that the day before we started that was the flat top tour. I felt so bad, but gotta give them what they want. Anyway, that's on a hundred and twenty-five foot lot. First floor heated on that house is thirty-eight fifty-one square feet, which would net out a credit of six hundred and ninety-three square feet of impervious open slat, uh, open slat decking over impervious surface. They've got a little over a hundred more square feet of, of dune deck than that figure, I mean, of open decking. They're at a thousand eighty-three. So if they net out nine hundred and sixty-three square feet, pick your side, but it would be a nice tiki bar out there. And you could probably get, uh, you know, a hot tub and a sauna out there as well. I mean, you know, it's, let's get real here. If, if, if Big Boy wants to do that, he can do it under this law right now.
Why are we using, uh?
And I'm just saying that.
Deck, what, why are we using decks and percent credits?
Because that's what, the planning board that I voted for three and a half years ago, that's what was suggested and we went with it. And that to.
If you're getting a hundred percent, uh, credit for, no.
Twenty-five percent.
Well, that's a, that's a, uh, you know, covered of what's under a roof. Twenty-five percent of what's under the roof, the footprint of the house.
Well, it's the heated, the first floor or the mid floor in this case.
Yeah.
It's the footprint of the heated or conditioned living space.
Twenty-five percent is just completely arbitrary. It doesn't have anything to do with.
Yeah, I, I agree one hundred percent. Where, where in the world we ever got that from? I don't know, Wes. I mean, the, the U.
I'd have to go back and look. I don't, I don't recall.
I think the whole confusion is, is that you're, you're talking about permeable this, that, but you're, they have nothing to do with each other.
Well, it, it's, I, I think it was an initiative to try to create some, uh, uh, use for impervious structure. Maybe, maybe the better tack would be to give you some money off on your, your taxes if you used X percent of impervious stuff rather than say, you, you can build more by taking away, uh, the deck as far as lot coverage. And I'm against that. I'm against being able to build more. And the, the twenty-five percent I think is outrageously large.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, we're going the wrong way.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we're going to get to that.
Do you like a, do you like a smaller number?
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
Um, okay. I think unless it, we need to look at the, we call it the Owens compound, but literally there is, I think there was probably about fifteen or twenty square feet of lot coverage on that great big lot. And I was getting the surveyor out there about every other day to check before I poured the concrete to make sure. So we're close, real close. But you start pulling out the footprint of that great big house and, uh, contribute it towards some more lot coverage. There you go. Um, okay. Now I'm gonna get Wes to, anybody want to take a break? Are we okay?
Good.
Um, we get Wes to, he and I, this one dug in and, and he offered some examples of the utilization of the ordinance as it's written right now. I'll let you dial in on that one.
This was seventeen King Fisher Trail. Sorry, the only plan was too large for me to scan. So I had to, um, take a picture of it. So in this case, this was a deck addition and swimming pool. A deck over here. This is the house. This is the open slatted deck that was added. This is the pool deck. This is the pool. These are the retaining wall, the retaining areas, grass swales. Um, so just to show you how they usually show the calculations. Open slatted deck that they proposed is eight hundred and seven square feet. So the current language allows you to take twenty-five percent of the attached single family dwelling footprint, which has been historically interpreted as the foundation. Twenty-five percent of, in this case, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight square feet equals seven hundred and thirty-two square feet. In this case, they are applying for eight hundred and seven square feet of open slatted debt. Minus seven thirty-two, they only have to account for seventy-five square feet of that open slatted debt. Meaning that they can apply, the other coverage can go towards the concrete pool and pool deck. So by doing that, they come out to twenty-nine point seven eight percent lot coverage. So y'all understand, you, you see how the, how it's applied?
But show the open slat decking.
I did while you were away. It's, yeah, this is.
Pull back on that.
This is the open slatted deck area.
That doesn't count towards lot coverage. Aesthetically, that does not cover, I mean, count the, the lot coverage. And it's, that's a lot. I mean, that's filling in.
And as far as the calculations go, y'all can maybe make more out of it than I can. But I have to make sure, all I'm looking for to make sure is that it has the one and a half inch requirement in the calculation, but you can see how long it is. And they also have to provide their seal and a, um, certifying that it's a one and a half inch rain event. I don't know. Do you want me to?
Does he have a stormwater basin in there?
And where?
Yeah, that's.
This is, this detail is the basin.
I see the detail, but where is it on the?
Over here, you've got, uh, you've got basin here.
Yeah.
Right here. You've got grass swell here, basin here, swell here, basin here, basin here.
I mean, it's, it's an extensive, you know, report versus a couple more that we looked at today that are on, you know, look like notebook paper size. I mean, you gotta.
And see, here they said design storm event, one and a half inches of rainfall over a storm. So.
Now, the storm event, it doesn't matter if it's one hour or ten hours.
When we first discussed all of this, that, that was considered at one point, but the town never, it was never included for simplicity. And the town engineer made an argument that it wasn't necessary.
So that could be over a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hour period?
One and a half inch rain event. There's no, there's no designated timeframe.
That doesn't make any sense.
No, I would think it would be one and a half inches per hour.
Yep.
And that's what it would be.
Yeah, that's, I think you need to get sort of tied in with the state stormwater, uh, language and, uh, intent. This is like, you take a little bit of this and you make it to your, this is, this is gravy. An inch and a half is nothing.
I'm surprised to hear that it's not over a finite period of time. Was that, was it discussed?
It was discussed.
By who?
The planning board and the town engineer.
When?
I don't recall the year.
But when I was.
Where's the seal? Where's the seal on that?
But yeah, that, I mean, what did he list out on, on his? Go back to his.
He didn't, he didn't specify timing.
Twenty, two thousand twenty is when that was done.
This, when this site plan was done, but the one and a half inch rain event requirement, I don't recall what year that was.
That needs to be looked at.
I, I'm, I'm surprised I didn't.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you. An hour is, is more standard.
How about a year? One and a half inches a year?
Yes.
Well, I mean, you know.
Twenty-four hours.
It's just as good as.
Twenty-four hours is standard.
It, well, it needs to be spelled out.
I thought it was over one eighth. I thought it was, uh, one of those calculations.
We'll, uh, we'll not make a note on that one.
Correct. We can, we can come back to that.
Uh, figure out where, where that might come from and why it's not a, a finite number. Uh, okay. And that, that house, that house there was up at King Fisher. I mean, it, um.
That was seventeen King Fisher. That was.
No, se- seventeen.
King Fisher.
It was fit, King Fisher, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. The one, the other one's at seventeen Soundview.
Correct. This is seventeen Soundview. This was a permit for new house, pool, decks, spa, um, landward, wood decking. Um, this is on the Curry Tuck Sound, obviously. This is the wood decking here, the steps, four foot walkway and stairs. Um, in this case, the open slatted deck exemption, this is a different, um, individually prepared to plan. Open deck exemptions, proposed swimming wood, uh, swimming wood decking four forty-six. Proposed wood walkway and stairway one oh four. Proposed wood decking at Bulkhead one ninety-six. Total open wood deck exemption seven forty-six. The twenty-five percent of the attached single family dwelling was three thousand eight fifty-two times twenty-five equals nine hundred and sixty-three square feet exempt, exemption. In this case, they were, they requested seven forty-six out of that nine sixty-three.
Yeah, they could have taken it to the maximum of nine sixty-three.
But they could add on later though, right?
Well, just another, what?
And in, and in this case, they're.
They used seven forty-six.
With that, with that taken into consideration, they, uh, the coverage is at twenty-nine point six percent.
Right.
With the decks.
Long story short is they netted out because of this twenty-five percent, um, ordinance, they netted out seven hundred and forty-six square feet that, in fact, it's on the lot, it covers a lot, but it's not lot coverage. They got to use it in hard, hard stuff.
And this is the.
Makes sense to everybody? It, that seven hundred and forty-six square feet, four years ago, you wouldn't have, you. How much stuff did we want to put on there? It's the question.
Here they're showing stormwater basin one, right goes around this way. Stormwater basin two, three and four. And then here's the calculation. This example is at 27 Ninth Avenue, and this is where I wanted to show where decking can be demolished and rebuilt and you still get credit for it. Um, the color, I, I noticed this afternoon, Andy, after you left, but this color right here doesn't match this, this is proposed open slatted decking.
Oh, okay.
This right here says that it's supposed, um, is to remain or be replaced, but I did the math, each single, every single one of these has the parentheses showing whether it's coverage to come out or coverage to stay in. In this case, they're removing decks, they're removing the, uh, open deck down here, they're removing portions of the driveway, and they are rebuilding this portion, it was included because the, the math came out. They're tearing down this and this and taking out this, these decks, this portion of the driveway, and then rebuilding this, and all of this right here is new. And in this case, the percentage that what they are building, where is it, I wrote it down, 25% was 760.3 square feet, they're actually showing 23.7%, which is 692.3 square feet. But overall, they're removing 1,030 square feet of existing coverage. But I was mostly just using this to say that today you can tear down an open slatted deck and rebuild it and still make it work.
And I, I rode by that job yesterday and just kind of glanced over there because I was taking a picture of that big house at the end of ninth. And I mean, are they kicking about, you know, we gotta tear this, this, all this stuff out in order to, or are they putting it back in the same location? Or?
They don't have to put it back in the same.
No, no, I'm just saying, are they tearing it out so that it's gone?
They're tearing out portions that are gone and not being replaced as well, not all of it's being replaced. You can see here, existing shed to be removed and not replaced, existing detached open deck to be removed and not replaced.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well.
Existing portion of deck to be removed and not replaced. And then instead of having here, they're building it here. And then this is, this is the last one, this is a new construction again, this is on Ocean Boulevard, uh, 35 Ocean Boulevard. Let's see. It's kind of blurry, isn't it, unfortunately?
20,000 square foot lot.
It's an exactly 20,000 square foot lot. Open decks, 240 square feet, which they're allowed up to 442. So 240 of the open slatted debt, which is here, here, and all back here, 240 square feet. And that 240 square feet was applied elsewhere.
So, long story short on that one is it's 20,000 square foot lot. They got a decent sized house, they've got a, a pool, it's not a giant pool, but it's decent sized, they've got.
420 square feet, it says.
Yeah, they've got open slatted decking that helps them out some, and they've got a driveway. All in 20,000 square feet. Hence, my example of doing something on 20,000 square foot and potentially having a thousand feet that you could glean out if you did open decking. So, once again, 20,000 square feet is a fairly average number in Southern shores. Anyway, got any more to add to?
That's, that's the last example.
Okay.
But, um, like I said, um.
With, Wes and I have beat this thing up pretty good, um, and I appreciate y'all letting me grab hold of things.
Well, you, you presented how difficult.
Well, it.
Challenging it, it is, it's not.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, Robert, as far as, you know, the aesthetics don't hold as much weight as a stormwater runoff. I disagree, I, the aesthetics to me is paramount to what stormwater runoff damage would be done, I don't know, I just aesthetically, I hate the fact that, you know, what you're saying is somebody can come in and just demolish every tree and just go skin it from end to end, and it's kind of been done there at 35. If, if you look, uh, it's been done a lot, but that, in that example.
I think we have to look at things that if it's, that, that deal directly with aesthetics. Yeah, but don't use something like stormwater and lot coverage.
635, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read what I've sent Wes. And as far as what you said, Ed, is where in the world did 25% credit come from? And I, I would like, on top of the engineer question that we had, stormwater time period, I'd really like to understand where that 25% originated from back whenever it was in 20, I don't know, when the 20, when, when that came up, but I'm curious on where the evolution of 25%, but here, here's what I planned on bringing to you all tonight to at least consider. In the ZTA that's before you, um, let's look at that. Starting with, um, with item D, town staff has, has come in and Wes has deleted some stuff and underlined some stuff. But if you read that, it uses the 25%. What I would like to propose and discuss is this. Item D, open slatted decking, decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material not exceeding the lesser of 250 square feet or 25% of the footprint area of the enclosed living space portion of the attached single family dwelling shall not contribute to lot coverage. So in essence, what's that, what does that say? And it says that probably in 95% of all cases, we're allowing an additional 250 square feet for credit for using, uh, uh, impervious material, I mean, um, perv, over using wood decking or composite, whatever, uh, slatted decking you choose over pervious material, so it's.
Okay, how'd you come up with 250?
Well, you know, that example, that last example I looked at with Wes today, 240 is what they use, they could have used, what did we say, they had a, an option, the way it's written right now, to use 442 square feet of, of that space at 35 Ocean Boulevard, they had 442 square feet of credit. They could, could have used up to 442 square feet, they used 240, and that's real close to 250. And on this example that, um, of the, that I drew, that's not the scale, um, the additional square feet of, um, of lot coverage in that example, if you did 200 square feet, you, it would take you to 31% lot coverage, if you did 250 square feet, it would take you to 31.25. And so up till you could max out that example at 1,000 square feet.
Well, what if you just said, uh, you could, you don't have to give them a set figure, but you say not to exceed 30% lot coverage?
Ooh, that would, I mean.
Then you're not giving a credit.
No, you're not giving anything.
Well, you give them credit, but they still can't exceed 30%.
Well, they'd have to get it at least a 250, um, square foot credit, I mean, we're giving them that.
You're saying, you're saying count open slatted deck at a 20%, 25% figure, but it still counts, it just counts at 25%.
Right. That becomes really simple then, you got 30% lot coverage, period, not to exceed.
Oh, it's, it's been done that way in the past, like swimming pools, you know, they, it's not 100%, it's usually something else, because the whole idea is, yes, it's totally impervious, but rain falls on it and it doesn't run off, it lands in it. So there's some percentage.
If we put a, if we put a cap at the allowable, if we, I'm still not understanding exactly what you're saying, Linda.
They can do, the lot coverage will vary depending on the size of the house and all of that, so let them come up with whatever, whatever they can configure to get their allowance, but they cannot exceed 30% lot coverage, period.
But you said that the open slatted deck, the, the lot coverage for the open slatted deck area would just count as 25% instead of 100%? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
That's where we're at right now. Well, I mean, based on the.
But, but what you were saying is when you calculated some of those others, they went over 30% potentially.
Sure, and all those, my families went considerably over.
Right, so if we capped it at 30%, right?
Well, I mean, it already is.
Yeah, that was based on a percentage of the building footprint.
Right.
What Linda's saying is, don't even care how big the house is, is like this thousand square foot deck right here, open slat deck, we wouldn't count 1,000 as impervious, we count 250.
That's wrong.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm.
But that doesn't have anything to do with this, this could be a 2,000 square foot.
It's added to.
Yeah, well, tru- truly.
And then they, but the cover still has to stay under 30 is what she's saying. So if it's 1,000, then it's 250, if it's 2,000, it's higher than 500.
Right, that way you don't constrain them by some figure, right? Because it makes different style houses, different sized houses.
That's right, a small house, they don't get as big a credit.
Right.
Because they don't have as big a 25%.
Well, that could.
A big house gets a much bigger credit.
It, in my mind, it's, it's.
Potential.
It's, um, saying in this example that rather than give you 1,000 square feet, you get 250 square feet and.
Towards your impervious surface of the lot.
Yeah.
But you're still going over 30%.
Well, no, you can add.
But, but negligible, I mean, you know, 250 square feet, it, an example I could relate you to was at the end of Ninth Avenue, I had a conversation with a, a property owner that's doing some work, he's got a permit in with Wes, and Wes is familiar with it. Well, he's, he's gotta take out about 200 square feet of his driveway, um, in order to get what he wants with a swimming pool there. And he's not over, he's not right at lot coverage, he's got a little bit of spare lot coverage, but an additional 200 square feet, but he's got a lot of open slat decking. And, um, you know, certainly, if we can help him with the 250 square feet, in the, what I'm saying, capping at 250 square feet, then he doesn't have to tear that driveway out, and he can, you know, rob a little bit here and a little bit there, and we help him get to where he needs to be, but, um, you know, to.
I like, I, I mean, I agree, he, but he would get that same benefit calculating in the way that Linda is, is suggesting.
Well.
It would be the same thing.
But also though, theoretically, there's, you're still, your coverage still, the way Chairperson Ward calculated coverage by saying that your decks are aesthetically, his, in his argument, they're still 100%, then aesthetically, what he was saying, it would still be over 30% the way you proposed it. But as far as, if you would be give, recognizing that the open slatted decks are 25 or 75% pervious is what you're doing.
I, I don't have a problem, I, I mean, in, in the example that I could use would be maybe go back, uh, to 54. Yeah, okay, that house right there literally has like, you might as well say 0% lot coverage left, and if they wanted to do a 250 foot, something or another out there, uh, if it was hard structure, they could put 250 feet, and we're gonna back out 250 feet of all this open deck that they've got as a credit. So they could use that credit to, to, um, build something with a footprint of 250 square feet.
But then they're over.
And they're over.
They're over lot coverage.
Well, yeah, I mean, by 250 square feet that we backed out for the open slatted decking, I mean.
But on Linda's thing, they wouldn't.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to do that.
That's right.
I kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need to have a consistent standard throughout the period.
Yeah.
30% lot coverage, period, you figure out how you wanna do it.
Hey, I'm all for that, but that, we're, we're, we're going way back to, I mean, we're, we're starting over again with this as far as, I mean, I don't, I don't see how. I'm still not understanding your example of how we do this.
Well, I mean, they can do it any way they want to, I mean, they have, they have options, right?
Yeah.
But you still wanna hold them to the 30% lot coverage, because you're gonna get creep, and before you know it, people are gonna be at 31 or 32 or 33. And other people are gonna go like, well, what's, what's going on here? It looks like it's, you know, way over.
Sure, yeah.
But we, but we do that in a way currently, you're still subject to that 30%, it's just where you're counting your coverage, you're taking away the open slatted deck area currently, it's the same, it's pretty much the same thing, in my opinion, if I understand you correctly.
Physically, looking at that lot with the house and, and the swimming pool and the drive-in and the dune deck, it's maxed, it's there, it's, and.
And that's, and that's it, that's what they chose?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, they chose to, to, you know.
To max it out, then that's where it should be left.
We're, uh, that's even, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to give 250 rather than, you know, 1,000 square feet, I'm, I'm, you know, trying to meet this thing a little bit in the middle, um, but it just seems to me that if we say 30% is 30%, then he can't, he can't do anything here, or this is it.
We're not counting decks at all, period, and, and just, I'm building structure with the lot coverage.
Yeah, what you were saying, 30% would still be 30%, but 75% of the open slatted deck would be exempted. That's what we do now.
So it does come up above.
It's pretty much the same thing, and then theoretically, depending on how you look at the quote unquote coverage, whether you think open slatted decks are pervious or impervious, if you can just consider the amount of square footage of structure, it's still over 30% in either scenario.
Yeah, I think what, what's on the ground, what would be a standard, um, lot coverage calculation as built.
If it wasn't exempted.
Right, but, but what you're saying is that you have pervious decking above the lot coverage, you know, because you're saying it's part of the structure.
The pervious decking is, is, that area is taken out of the lot coverage.
But as, as it sits now.
The, yes, but also the same way she is proceeding, this, this, it would be applied the same way.
So it's, it's really not, I, I don't think I'm understanding Linda's point of view, are you saying that 30%, this is 30% right here, there's no credit for anything on, on that?
Well, they could take credit, I mean, they could jet, you know, get rid of their driveway or something if they want it, I mean, they have options.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, they have options.
Hey, believe me.
But you don't tell them.
I'm in your camp, but at the same time, not really, because we have already opened the doors.
Well, we haven't changed.
Three and a half years ago.
Yeah, but we didn't, haven't changed the 30%, still 30%, right?
It is, but at the same time, we're saying that open slatted decks are exempted 75%.
But most of those decks are attached to the building, right? But most of those decks are attached to the building, right?
They have to be. Right now, that's, that's one of the requirements. They have to be.
You get your aesthetics.
They have to be attached.
It's still, it's still, lot coverage is lot coverage to me that if I wanted to exempt the, the open slatted decking there, to me, that's still thirty percent lot coverage.
Because they built a bigger house.
That's right.
So they're kind of stuck, right?
Oh, how about some choice?
I agree. The thing I like about both of your suggestions is that it takes away the relationship of the size of house. The size of the house is currently benefiting because we're relating that twenty-five percent credit back to that structure.
Sure.
Somebody that has a fifteen hundred square foot house or a two thousand square foot house, they don't.
They lose out.
They don't get as, as big a credit. However, in your instance, everybody gets the same thing. Everybody gets a freebie of two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, you can.
You get a ten by twenty foot deck. It does not count. Doesn't matter who you are.
That's right. The, the ten by twenty-five foot deck would not count towards lot coverage. And it wouldn't be calculated toward lot coverage. And in this case, if, if we retrod and we went back, which is what, you know, the item E is saying is people want credit for existing. So if these people wanted, you know, to build a, you know, a, a small whatever out there and use two hundred and fifty feet of their credit, then, I mean, we're not bending nearly far as allowing somebody nine hundred square feet of credit, which is, he can get that right there on that lot.
Well, I'll, I'll say one thing. If, if you consider what Chairperson Ward has said about capping it at two fifty, then I would, if that's what you all are inclined to do, then I would say there's no even, no need to even point in the enclosed, put the enclosed living space portion in, just say two fifty, period.
Yeah.
Because almost all, ninety-nine percent of the houses that are built here are not one thousand square feet. They're greater than one thousand square feet.
Sure. Yeah, thousand square feet is, you know, twenty-five percent. So you're, you're a thousand square foot house, you'd still get the two hundred and fifty foot credit. I, I think it's very reasonable.
I like the part of everyone gets the same benefit. You've got a big house or a small house or modest house.
Okay.
I like that. Right. The, the, the benefit is, is, the benefit's good, but do you still want people to go over the lot coverage?
Well, they will, but, but, I mean, in this scenario, they'd go over by two hundred and fifty feet, which would probably get it at thirty point, you know.
Right. But is, is, is that what the town wants to keep going over and maybe?
It's us. I mean, we, we get recommended to the town council. They may say, uh-uh.
So would they have to ask for a waiver?
Who?
The, if they, if they went over the thirty percent, you'd have to ask for a waiver, right?
Well, I.
So I'm thinking that the, the engineer stormwater plan would still be required. That's, that's, that would be their waiver.
Right. If they, if they wanted to get that two hundred and fifty square foot credit on this house right here, this, using this example, they wanted to build a, a little pool bar or something, then they'd have to jump through the hoop. I mean, it's messy and expensive, but it wouldn't matter then.
Well, can I ask another? Attached, detached, does it matter? Right now, it's currently attached.
The credit for.
It would be two fifty, so it, does it make a difference?
I don't think so.
It doesn't make a difference to me.
Yeah. And then also existing or proposed wouldn't make a difference. If it's two fifty of open slatted deck.
Existing.
Existing is fine.
It could be existing or proposed.
Yes.
Well, you, people wouldn't have to tear out and put back. I mean, that's what you're saying. That's what, that's what you're saying.
Yeah. If you say, if you allow existing, then people won't have to tear down. That's right.
Yeah. And that's common sense. To have anybody tear something down.
Right, right.
That what, you know, you've corrected in, in item D.
I'm just seeing, trying to get my, my idea of which way you all are going. So I did, so subsection D would be rewritten, say something to the effect of up to two hundred and fifty percent of open slatted deck.
Two hundred and fifty square feet.
Of open slatted decks that allow water to penetrate through the pervious material.
Shall not be, shall not contribute to lot coverage.
Shall not contribute to lot coverage. Correct. That's what it would say. Based on the discussion y'all have, the direction you're going.
Looks like a bunch of these got through the wire.
Well, you know, I, I know, I know we're going to hear, oh, you know, now we're going to make, you know, if, if I built my cousin a two hundred and fifty square foot hot tub out there or something, you know, you know, the, he's going to be, everybody else is going to be non-conforming that has for the last three and a half years. But, I mean, there's a handful of people that have used exemptions.
I don't have a, a number on it. I, I would say between ten and twenty. That's the best number I can give you.
Yeah, fair enough. But they're, they're legally non-conforming if we, if town council so chooses to follow our path.
They would be.
Which is no big deal.
They would be legally non-conforming.
I think the biggest deal is going to be the people that are, that are planning for construction.
Yeah.
And I, well, you gave an, there was an example of one home that was landlocked where they had pretty extensive decking. We use this situation. Most of them would be these big walkways and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one at Soundview Trail was, they, they used, or no, at Kingfisher, they used seven hundred and thirty-two out of an available eight oh seven. So, I mean, that's a lot. That's three times more than, than two hundred and fifty.
It is.
But I just think that, that in retrospect, for me, I made a mistake. Everybody for this as a planning board member, it was only my second time sitting up here and it, it had rolled through, it made sense, but, and we went on to something else. So I'm saying I made a mistake.
I'll say this about the house that you referred to on Kingfisher. They had a, an, a very extensive stormwater management plan with multiple levels of cleaning and infiltration and that kind of thing. They, they worked it.
Absolutely.
And good for them.
Yeah.
The thing that I don't like is that our, the, our credit is tied to the size of the structure. I just don't think that.
Yeah, because depending on the size of the structure, you could almost build a one-bedroom detached house on a property.
Yeah.
Well, in thi- in this example right there, according to the current ordinance, he's got almost a thousand square feet of buildable hard surface credit right there because.
Do you need a job? It's like a ticket to the future.
He'll be so mad at me for doing this and wanting to talk to us. But no, I, I think, should we put this in a form of a motion? Do you want to take a look at D before we?
That would be up to y'all, but I, I mean, D would state, I'll, I'll say it one more time so everybody's on board.
Okay.
D, D would state up to twenty-five percent of open slatted decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious materials shall not contribute to lot coverage.
Say that.
Up to twenty-five percent.
No, twenty-five, two hundred and fifty square feet.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I see what you're doing.
Up, up to two hundred and fifty square feet of open slatted deck.
That's, that's reasonable.
That allow water to penetrate through the pervious material. Strikeout, what's in between there and shall, and then ends and shall not contribute to lot coverage. And, and E.
Yeah, E is what I was.
E, those allowances under exemptions would stay, I would suggest, well, if you don't want it, if you want it to apply to existing open slatted decks, then that strikeout in E as presented would have to stay in.
Right. And that's, that's what we're saying.
That's one of the main drivers of this discussion.
Everybody that wants it can get a two hundred and fifty square foot exemption for existing.
Equal to everyone.
But they still have to, you still have to provide an, provide an engineer's stormwater plan for that credit to be recognized.
You would have if it would have been a, a thousand square feet. So it, it's part of the process.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good?
Wait, I just want to make a note that on the next page, page three, line twenty-seven, shall be used for calculating the calculation of lot coverage. Shouldn't that be changed to, shall be used for calculating?
It should just be for calculating. Yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the text amendments we did a couple of weeks ago. That's where a strikeout was not taken out or deleted when I drafted, when I used it to draft this. So that's one other thing to consider here also. When you say on page three, this, those, the other pages essentially are the other zoning districts.
Yeah.
Are you all, I just want to make sure that you all, if you, if you're recommending this application with the amendments you've discussed, then that means you're okay with allowing it in the other zoning districts.
Right.
Except for commercial.
Correct.
Where commercial has their own, they've got a whole nother thing going on with, with permeable pavers and parking lots for group developments.
No, I think everybody's on board with, through that all the zoning districts.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that's what was in there.
Wes, can you read that one more time and then I might ask for a motion on those corrections on item D and item E?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to do one, I will ask for motion one at the time or both altogether?
Oh, just altogether. You could just say on ZTA two, two oh one as amended.
Okay. Can you read what we?
Uh, yes. Uh, D six, D would state up to two hundred and fifty square feet of open slatted decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material shall not contribute to lot coverage.
Okay.
E would take it, would take out what struck out. So it states that those allowances and or exemptions listed in subsection D of this paragraph six shall be available only upon presentation of a survey with all applicable requirements, including plan certification for a lot disturbance or stormwater management permit as described in section thirty-six dash one seventy-one three of the town code of ordinances.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve those two items that Wes just read in?
I'd make a motion that we approve it as Wes read the, read the changes going forward.
Can I get a second? Ed, thank you. Any discussion beyond what we've had so far? Everybody good? Um, then I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? None seen? All right.
Thank you all.
Well, I'm sure that this will meet some opposition. This, this is like throwing a stink bomb into some, I think, but yeah, it's.
That's what we do.
That's what we do. It's our camp.
It's our job.
We get paid the big money for. Anybody? Anybody want to speak?
Thirty-one point two five percent. I'm sorry. Thirty-one point two five percent is what we're allowing basically, as long as two hundred and fifty of it is open slatted deck.
You're allowing an additional two hundred and fifty square feet on top of.
Thirty percent.
Yeah. Thirty percent.
Thirty percent. That's right.
So it would vary.
Oh, yeah. Sure. The percentage will vary big time. You know, on this, on, you know, my cousin's big house, it'll be, where he's at thirty percent right now, it'd be thirty point oh four or something.
Right.
At my house, it will be closer to thirty-one.
It depends on the lot size and the coverage.
That's not relative. Anyway, we're at public comment time in the agenda. Would you like to, any, okay. Well, planning board comments, I'm going to start with Linda. You got anything?
Uh, yes, I, I would, I, I spoke to Wes about this, you know, just going back with my neighbor again with his major renovation over there on Osprey. And then, you know, you, you're in the business, construction dumpsters, the, the roll-offs that, that they have out there. Would it, and I don't know if you looked at this yet, Wes, but would it be an issue since we're into the trash thing that there's some sort of tarping going on for those type of dumpsters, construction dumpsters? Because I've been picking garbage up in my yard.
Just blowing out.
Just blowing out animals. Not animals, but you, you know, good, they're siding the house. Now you've got all that house rack going in there and it's blowing out all over the place.
Well, Mr. Galgansky, I believe you had said you didn't want me to reach out to the contractor.
No, no, he took care of it.
So has he taken care of it?
He removed it, the whole dumpster.
Okay.
But not to say it's going to happen, but you know, to, to stop other problems.
My answer was going to be, and after looking into it, it's not a specific requirement, but I think we have the authority and especially the building inspector has the authority. They're supposed to maintain a cleave job, clean job site, period.
Yeah.
And if they win, if the wind keeps on blowing periodically over and over again, either way.
Yeah, but this, this is the case.
We, we would say that you need to cover your dumpster.
His workers are in Virginia, they, they live outside of Richmond and everybody comes from outside of Richmond. So.
It's no excuse.
I know it's not an excuse, but you're not going to get the action that you want in a timely manner. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if you just, if, I mean, spend twenty dollars for a tarp, run a couple of bungees and just cover it.
We would, we would have the authority to find them if they didn't address it.
Yeah.
Update on the marketplace?
They have submitted their demolition permit application and building permit and zoning permit application. The demolition permit app has not been approved at this point. We're waiting on some more information from them. The building inspector and I had a virtual meeting with a representative of the property owner and three representatives from the contractor. Contractor, I don't remember the name of the company at the moment, I apologize, but they're based out of Raleigh. And the timeframe, timeframe is subject to change as to when they start demolition, when they hope to start demolition, when they hope to start construction, when they hope to be in. So I, I don't want to say that publicly at the moment. I'd rather wait and see. But all I can say right now is we have the permanent applications.
Stormwater?
They have the site plan that they submitted, the revised site plan package. Everything that was addressed or requested to be addressed has been addressed. The town engineer has met on site with the project engineer, Kim Hamby, as you all required in the conditions. And as a result of their meeting, the site plan on the grading and drainage plan shows exactly what they need to do. And the town engineer has seen the plan and he said that it's consistent with what they discussed at their meeting on site. Uh, the state did say that it is not subject to a state stormwater approval as they expected. But they are going to make the changes that Jeff, Joe Andloff and Ms. Hamby agreed on and discussed as you all required. When they went to look at the existing system and they were supposed to address any glaring deficiencies. But maybe in the next meeting or two, I'll be able to release the dates because right now we don't really, I, I don't really know exactly when they're, that's all going to take place. They've given us rough dates, but I, I'm not sure.
Robert?
I'm good.
Since Tony's not here, what's any status on movement with trash and?
Town manager and I met last week to discuss this and we are in the process of drafting or making some town code amendment changes to the solid waste ordinance. And we hope to be able to present to the town council at their March ninth workshop meeting, their budget slash workshop meeting, what the, what we're, what we're considering recommending be done. Whether it be town code amendment or policies, it's going to be a combination of both. Um, and then if all goes well with them and time allows, we would like to see it on their April regular town council meeting agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just to back up on the trash. I, I went and spoke to the town council on, you know, what we had discussed in our meeting last month. last month and gave them the list, the bulleted list of, you know, items that we were concerned about. So they were receptive and, uh, it was a good meeting, I thought, so hopefully it goes somewhere. All right, have you got any announcements that we need to know? I'm sure you've got one.
Next meeting, yes, sir, is March twenty-first, um, five P M here in the Pitt Center. And the application, um, is a zoning text amendment application and in this case is not from the town as has been going on for, it's been a while since we had a text amendment application from someone other than the town. Uh, but this would be from Quablan Associates on behalf of Sumit Gupta. Um, and this would be pertaining to, uh, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-seven where it allows for group development of commercial buildings, which is the marketplace, Southern Shore Crossing. This would amend thirty-six dash two-oh-seven to allow for group development of commercial and residential buildings. That would be the text amendment.
Yeah. Where is that location?
Well, that will, it'll be discussed later on, but you can't consider a text amendment like that specific to just one property, it applies to the entire district. But the applicant, they own property at sixty-one ninety-five North Crowatan Highway here on Jingay Creek off of one-fifty-eight.
Ooh, that's real old property.
So they're, basically, it's a request to allow mixed use.
So when, when, when they, uh, turn everything in, I mean, you just had the application, that's all they've sent so far. When we, when we meet in March at our meeting, do you anticipate them having everything that they need for us to start discussion?
Right now, you have, other than the staff report, you have everything you're gonna get for this.
That's it.
Yep, they're not gonna, this will have to go through the process first and then if it's denied, they can't move forward with their site plan. If it's approved, then they can move forward with their site plan, then they'll come to y'all with a site plan.
Yeah.
Wasn't the original, uh, Scotty butt on that property when they cleared it and all, that it was gonna be commercial?
It's zone commercial, it's all, as far as I know, it's always been zone commercial. But, but when I first came here in two thousand and nine, not long before that, permits had been issued for a project called The Cove and it was a townhouse residential development. Commercial property allows residential and commercial uses. But our zoning ordinance in thirty-six two-oh-seven doesn't allow group development of commercial and residential buildings.
So there, you told me the other day that they, he showed you some preliminary stuff, that ain't gonna be in, in any.
They, he, there were, there were some preliminary drawings that he, I do not have copies of, they were used during the meeting.
He took them.
And they, they, they are with him.
Gotcha, okay, so, but that's the only thing that we've got on the March twenty-first agenda right now.
Um, well, if everything works out, uh, we have, or I have finished making changes to, uh, ZTA um, two-one-oh-eight signage. The town attorney has that and we're hoping, thinking that we could possibly have that on your agenda again on the March meeting.
Okay, so that'll just be a discussion or?
It'll be this, it'll be revised zoning text amendment.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be another draft of what you all had recommended previously to council that has been shot, shot back to you all.
Yeah.
Or it was shot, it was sent back to staff for us to take back to you.
Right. Okay, yeah, because there were some legal stuff that Ben was gonna look at as.
There was that and then remember, there was feedback at the public hearing that the town council said we need to incorporate and address.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was feedback provided by numerous others. So it takes comments that we received up to this point, puts it in the draft and now Mr. Gallup's gonna review it and see, we'll see where it stands.
So we, we don't get it.
It may, tentatively will be on that agenda.
Okay, so we, we won't get it until he's done with what?
Correct, but I'm, I've told him that I want to get it out no later than a week before y'all's meeting, which is what I usually try to do.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm gonna entertain motion to adjourn. First, second, adjourn, thank y'all.
Wes, uh, uh, thank you.
Nice, you like that?
Yeah.